Get started. All right, welcome everyone. It's Thursday, December 8th. Can you believe this? I know. This is the time.
You can imagine.
It's on my desk. So we'll call the meeting to order. This is integral care board committee meeting. And it is five and. And we have a corner. And I think Derek Hernandez is in the building. So we'll be showing this in. So let's get started. Does it says comments? We have anybody here who'd like to visit with us tonight? Hold on to agenda item number two, which is chair's welcome now. Welcome, Chair. This is the first meeting. Welcome to all of you. So nice to see you. I've got two things I'd like to talk about tonight. One is board committee assignment. And also, I would like to take chair's privilege and recognize David Reed. So I'm going to spend a minute there now. But let's go through the committee assignments. All of you have graciously agreed to do everything asked for today, right? You have, I think the committee assigned a virtual document. Is it in? No. If not, I will basically say in general. Luann, thank you for chairing the finance committee and continuing to serve. Al, thank you for joining finance committee. Really appreciate it. Deborah. Luann. Thank you. Deborah, you're continuing to serve on finance committee. Correct. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And we'll put you in all for extreme guidance on. Extreme. Extreme. Everything finance next year. Just so you know, Luann did chair the December board meeting. So you can hold her responsible for all these present agenda items that were coming forward. She did an awesome job sharing the meeting. Thank you to Dr. Zamora, who hopefully will be with us tonight. And has agreed to continue to chair the planning operations committee. And Mr. Hayes and Reverend Callahan have also agreed to continue on that. So we're really grateful for that. And also, Mr. Hayes, thank you for. For running the network advisory committee. I really appreciate it. And Reverend Callahan, the Texas council. So we've got a lot of good work coming up this next year. And I'm grateful that I get to be on this journey with all of you. Thanks. Um, so I'd like to take a minute to recognize David. This is unfortunately our last meeting with David in his current capacity. Because I'm assuming he's going to come back and visit with us.
He's working right now.
Probably so. But I think as you've all have heard, David is going to be taking on a new exciting position. And so I'd like to say my own personal thanks to you, David, for it's been fun working with you for the last. Three years, is that right? David has been an exceptional leader in the finance area, at least for me, from a board standpoint. I am always so well educated about what's going on. And David has been just fabulous in terms of keeping me abreast, educating me about everything that's going on with. Integral care and what's happening in the broader range of behavioral health in Texas and nationally. So you really helped me get to know the organization better. And I was going to thank you for that. And thank you for all the service that you brought to the organization. And I know you're going to be just here like, because I hear a lot about how much you've been doing. I do want to say that Mr. Reed is embarking on a new journey with Texas council as a chief of systems finance. And I think that's going to give us the opportunity to continue to work with you. It's like the work that you use when you're doing all the behavioral health, the mental health authorities in Texas. And David also told us last week's meeting that he was recently elected as vice chair of the National Association of County Behavioral Health and Development Disability Directors, or MACB HCD. Like, who can remember that acronym? I don't know. But in that position, he will fill his position on the National Association of Counties board. So he's going to be working at all levels again, continuing. And we know you're going to be a huge advocate for our communities. And thank you for your willingness to contribute in that role as well. Anybody else like to say a word?
Yeah, he also told me we're his favorite. And we're always going to be, anyway. He was going to work extra hard to sneak some things in a budget here and that. And we know how good you are with numbers, so.
Hi, David.
I want to thank you for your patience. Hanging in there with us, with me as chair, asking hard questions, persisting questions. Where's the virtual? Yeah, you know. So but we're going to miss you. You contributed greatly to our organization. And we know you're going to continue to contribute, as Trish said, to these programs and to all of our communities in your new role.
Yeah, I'm going to echo that as well. We're going to miss you in so many ways. I'm going to miss you physically, just because of the support. I know I could always rely on David whatever I came up with, you know? And if you didn't have the answer, you'd find somebody with you. Then you'd have an answer. It's just been such a great working experience to work with you here at Integral Care. I know we go back a few more years with Travis County doing our probation department. That may not have been as fun. We certainly have grown to respect you in so many ways with all that you do, your skill set, the heavy lifting that you do. It seems sometimes there's no end to that. I bet it is. I just don't know where that might be. But at any rate, one mission, and I'm glad that we're going to be seeing you around soon. So that's really great. Great, great. Just a great person to be around. Thank you, David.
Well, David, I wanted to say as well, since I've been on the finance committee, you have a knack for communicating about finances in ways that everybody can understand. And that's a real skill, because we have so many funding sources that provide us revenue in so many different ways. And you've got a knack for understanding all of it. It's pretty incredible. And I also know that you were very well respected at the cross state for the work that you do. You know so much about Medicaid. I know you've been on lots of state committees and groups. So you're going to be a huge asset for all the local mental health authorities across Texas. Because you're going to just bring a wealth of knowledge. And I think it's always good when you do state work to have had that local experience. And you're going to bring that to the table. And that gives you so much credibility. So I wish you all the best. And I know that you will come back and give us special reports and say, go along. So thank you so much for your service to Travis County.
I'll just say it's been a pleasure working with you. And I'll echo the patience. I know that I have called you many times, just like, hey, can you help explain this to me? And you have been very gracious with me. I joked with you before. It feels like you're walking around with a wagon carrying your brain and your knowledge, you know? You just know so much. And I've heard great things from other people, and just how of a pillar of support you are with what they're working on and helping them understand. A lot of complex and technical, highly technical information. You just, you break it down to where it's easier to digest and take it all in. So we will miss you greatly and look forward to still working with you in a different capacity.
I want to echo everything that has been shared. What more can be said? But we will be seeing you at Texas council. Appreciate all the work you do.
Welcome, Chair.
Thank you. Well, they're being so kind. I mean, I'm going to be very sheriffy, okay? For your red.
Thank you so much for everything that you've done and all that. Fun, yeah. So with that, you know you have friends, David. And your friends will always be there for you. And we're such you've been here for this agency and for the, all the members of our community that have benefited from your success. Definitely going to miss you.
I will continue to try to take care of everything in terms of state level.
Okay, do you promise not to change your cell phone number, though? Do know how to fix. Well, thank you very much. Okay. Thanks, everyone, for honoring David. Because I know his colleagues are going to be in a bit of mourning for a while. But you know where to find them, so.
We've expressed our state of the rage. Well, what's an angry stage?
It's a little bit longer than that should be. But I just dropped an air tag in the box.
All right, well, let's move on to our consent agenda, which is jam packed with policy updates that we did go through one by one as the finance committee passed through and did approve and bring forward. Welcome, Dr. Zamora.
No worries.
You just missed our little fun time where we got to honor David. Don't thank him our thanks. Good to see you. We're glad you could be with us. So we do have a number of items on the consent agenda. Unless, if there's any request to pull anything off of the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve. Motion, a second, all in favor? Hi, any opposed? Again, thanks, David, for bringing us this effort over the last two finance committee meetings and board meetings. But thanks for bringing all our policies up to snuff before David departed. So we really appreciate that attention to David for that. We're going to move on to item number four with this action items. Our first is recommendations to approve the consolidated local service plan and local provider network development.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Louise Lynch, provider network and authority officer. And I ask that David Evans introduce this item. David, do you remember?
I used to have a management team member that would say, I slept since then. I don't think that quite works anymore. But just one area I wanted to note that did come up the other evening. And it's just the context of in the law. And that while we put this plan together, we submitted to the state. When they approved this plan, it really sets up the boundaries of the policy around what's inside of the public service or delivery. And so it's, in addition to our primary purpose of being a provider to individuals, it also affects liability of the center. It also affects what kind of action that we could be open to. I'll just give you two examples, and I'll give this back to Louise. But a big center to the south of us here didn't include some of the juvenile justice treatment programs in their local plan. And they had a county, a Jason County complaint, and the state asked them to cease and desist services because it was not in the local plan. There's another center that, in the middle parts of the state, that didn't include any of their IV, HIV treatment, educational outreach in their plan. And when the state later reviewed the services, as they were submitting data, said, that's not in your plan. And therefore, we'd ask you to stop by doing that services. There's other things for the attorneys on the, on the, on the dais here, just being sure that there may be some private interest that would think that we somehow are in competition with them. And we shouldn't be providing these same services. And yet, in the side of the approved local plan, it gives us those type of protections. So when we discussed this the other evening, Louise just very carefully was going through it all. I just jumped in to say also, there's this larger legal context and statutory context of the plan. How do I do, Louise?
Excellent. Thank you so much. Okay, so we're asking that we recommend the approval of the consolidated local service plan and the local network provider plan. Both of these plans are in your live binders. And these plans build upon previous plans that have been submitted to the state. The planning network advisory committee did approve these plans on November 10th. And did recommend that you approve them as well. I'll start with the consolidated local service plan and then go on to the local network provider plan. So the consolidated local service plan is an update from our previous plan. It updates the history, the description. It includes our new strategic plan, any board of trustee changes, and expands the eligibility. It also includes references to our racial equity plan. As I said, it includes our strategic plan. And so you'll see this lead throughout this new plan. This consolidated local service plan includes all of these planning pieces. The local service area, the psychiatric emergency plan, our jail diversion plan. We included this year specifically IDB information for the plan. And we make sure that it is aligned with the HHSC strategic priorities. Now, at planning and operations, we talked about the fact that HHSC has a new strategic plan. But they built in the strategies they want us to address in their older strategic plan. So you'll see those as well in this plan. So the service changes since the last time are, a lot of it are the investments that Travis County had made over this past year. The mobile crisis outreach team for children, that 911 call and MCOAT, the in-home services and respite services for IDD, safe landing. Those are the wraparound services for foster care, children, and AOT and the jail intake and navigation teams. This rounds out the community participation and planning that we have been involved in and engaged in throughout the year. We always incorporate those pieces in our plan. And this also includes some of the current work that the psychiatric stakeholders are also engaged in. So you'll see these, these specific planning pieces that we've been involved with. Included are specifically some of the things that we added in terms of local plans and priorities. As we did last year, we're talking about strengthening the system for children and youth. The financial issues that we've been, that are specifically front and center, the transition to the charity pool and directed payment programs, diversion of individuals with IDD and mental health concerns from juvenile justice, and intensive focus that we've had for a number of years on moving individuals out of homelessness. The the local plans also include the reducing the impact of substance use disorder, educating and increasing awareness of the community members about the impact of behavioral health substance use disorders and the resources to address them. And of course, our certified community behavioral health clinic. The biggest entry for jail diversion this time is under intercept four. And this is where we added in our plan, the jail intake and navigation team that provides those in reach into the jail, those wraparound services. Make sure that, that individuals are linked to services once they leave the jail. And also, if an individual with IDB is identified, that that individual is referred to the IDB team. This team includes peer support and case management and also medication support. We talked about medication supports and the way that those are delivered and in, in planning and operations. And part of what was discussed was the fact that we do have an advanced nurse practitioner that is able to ensure that continuity for people, when people need prescriptions when they're leaving the jail. Some of the other behavioral health strategies and priorities include increasing timeliness of access for outpatient services, specifically with a focus on equity, and improving continuity care in terms of from inpatient settings through community base, transportation. Again, addressing the behavioral health needs and financial stewardship. These are the links to the HHSC strategic plan. So that's why you'll see some duplication here in some of the areas that we've covered previously. For system development and identification of new priorities, of course, again, this the increased attention for, for children, sustainability of financing for the Herman Center practitioner and provider recruitment, specifically bilingual providers, expansion of the helpline services, and contemplation of and planning for a 24-hour urgent clinic walk-in allowing for law enforcement drop off. I'm going to stop here just briefly to see if there's any questions about the consolidated plan. Okay, moving on to the local provider network development plan. Of course, this is references something that David was talking about earlier. But it has to do with our responsibilities to develop a provider network, develop and manage one. These require stakeholder input, which I'm sure that we've seen is evidenced in our consolidated local service plan. In this plan, we have to put a rationale for why we would limit services. And this is specifically around non-Medicaid services we're talking about in this plan. When we do offer to raise to provide a profile for clients, that they can make choices and then to ensure that there's a safe transition between service providers. So within the updates for this particular plan, we include the local service area plan, of course, the non-Medicaid capacity for the different level of care that we provide. It includes our crisis services, residential inpatient. And it updated in this plan, the list of the organizational and individual providers, including those that provide services to clients with IDB. In administrative efficiencies this year, we included a lot of the information around our cloud-based services that increase functionality and reporting, the expansion of the national suicide prevention to 62 counties. Of course, the, to expand proprietor services through the contracts with health plans, sharing IT, and the outreach screening and services for for substance use and collaborating and to implement best practices around the certified community behavioral health. For provider availability, we have a responsibility to make sure we check HHSC website. We posted a request for information on our integral care website. And we emailed the communication to our network providers, yes waiver providers, the ABC soup of all the other providers, excuse me, Reverend Callahan. And, and we made sure we published the notification in transparencies. We responded to any inquiries made by interested providers. And also went to inquire to providers who had expressed interest in the past. We, when we posted our plan for 30 days, we received one comment. And this is the public comment that we received. And as a result of the public comment that we received, we added this to our consolidated plan as a recruitment area under provider recruitment. Specifically, you know, providers that are trauma found and use trauma informants methodologies that are also bilingual. So our procurement plans for this next two years include procurement of the crisis respite and crisis residential services as well as the level of care services for adults, level care three. And you'll see this recruitment plan that is laid out. Now, we're obligated under our planning to put out, in terms of procurement, any capacity that providers say they can, they can provide. And so generally, we do these recruitments and then we see, you know, who provides, who, who actually answers that recruitment. So this goes into some details about what the PNC involvement has been. You'll see that much more detailed here in the actual document. But the planning and network advisory committee also reviews any of the RFPs from last year, for the last two years, which included our RFPs for temporary nurse staffing, telepsychiatry, logon tenants, the Herman Center and the Heron Center programs. This is a revised timeline that we operated under over this last time with the submission date due to the state by December 31st. Any questions or comments?
I think this is incredible work. I mean, a lot had to go into this, so. Very impressive.
That's everything. The kitchen sink.
All right. Further questions? I'll accept the motion to approve the plans presented. Second, thank you. We have a motion of second, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, David. Agenda item B, which is discussing this appropriate action medical statement combined daily maintenance, difficult to follow. And we're talking about the end of October 31st, so October of 2022.
Yes, these are the October statements as finance was on December 1st, a little quick for a close on the November statements. So you will receive those in January. So as of October 31st, the overall budget is now up to just over $151 million, which includes budget amendments this fiscal year so far of just over $2 million. The October budget amendments included increases from Travis County and the contracts of just over 734,000. And then some adjustments to what was in budgeted reserve to cover some of the cost reimbursement and fee per service contract mix. A year to date, after planned utilization of fund balance and taking into account the public health provider charity care pool, we're showing positive in operations of just over 500,000. So on the public health provider charity care pool, we had budgeted 21 million, which is what this 3.5 is based on for the first two months of the year. The report we submitted to HHSC came in at just over, I believe it was 21.2 or 3 million. But that is pending their review, potential adjustments. They're still trying to determine what they consider appropriate documentation for certain things. So once we get those final numbers back, they'll be able to go in and just regularly book this as we move forward through the year. As far as overall fund balance, we are at just over 35 million, with almost 24 million of that being unreserved, which is 85 days of operation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions again? Clearly. I can afford. The better.
Yes.
The best kind of thing. I'll accept the motion to approve. All right, all in favor?
All right.
Okay. Item C, discussion takes appropriate action on adopting board policy 7.73 neutral employee separation.
So as this was a new proposed policy, we wanted to be sure that it was done as an action item on the board instead of a consent item. Basically, what this policy does, it memorializes the current practice that we have into a board policy. Currently, we allow employees, once they have utilized all of their potential paid leave, if they have a situation that requires them to be out longer, to apply for up to 120 hours of additional unpaid medical leave. to apply for up to 120 hours of additional unpaid medical leave. And this would keep them employed during that period of time. Once they have used all their unpaid medical leave, as well as any accrued leave that they have, if they're still unable to come to work, this would put a separation in at that point. They would still be able to apply for a job if it came time that they could come back. And it's an attempt to try to balance the needs of the employees with also the needs of having individuals available to provide services.
Questions? About the cost of like this 120, is that for a full-time employer?
That would be based on a full-time, so if there was a. Yes.
Hello. So nice to see you, welcome back. Snuck in there kind of like. Glad to have you. All right, any questions? All right, motion two. All right, motion second, all in favor?
All right.
Me opposed. And now we have a new policy. All right, item B is discussing take appropriate action regarding resolution of formation of Travis County Supported Supporting Housing Collaborative and appointment of Don Handley as his director.
So y'all had heard some in previous meetings about the Travis County Supported Housing Collaborative. In the Finance Committee folder, there is a PowerPoint that Lock Lord put together around the structure of the organization that they're proposing. You can see the organizations here that will be involved within the collaborative. The objective of the collaborative is to provide dignified, safe, and affordable housing for disadvantaged residents of Travis County, and to provide such other support to the supported organizations. So this gets to the point we were talking about where some of the current landowners that will have taxes abated are willing to put a percentage of those funds back in. Those funds will go to the collaborative, who will then disperse them to the members supporting organizations to help provide support services for individuals. Within the structure, each supporting organization is entitled to appoint one board member. And we're proposing that be Don Handley, who has been involved in this since the beginning and is very familiar with the entities and how it needs to structure. On the recommendation, this pulls the language straight out of the resolution, just so it's available, so people can see it in the public as well. Don't expect you to actually read all this as you make the motion. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I might be scared that we want to read. Any questions for David? This really is a culmination of an item we've been hearing about for the last years. Nice to see you. Motion, thank you for being willing to serve on. Any questions? I have motion two.
Second.
I have two seconds, so we're double covered. Motion second, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, David, thanks for finally. That's a really fabulous idea, really nice to see it come to life. All right, we're going to go on to the next item, which is discussing take appropriate action regarding resolutions. These are based to including authorization for applying for home American Rescue Plan funding through TDHC that we just approved.
Okay, so on this, this is regarding, so at 3515 Main Road, which is a property owned by Austin Housing Finance Corporation. They had put out an RFP which integral care in conjunction with CapPay developer and NHP had made a proposal for a housing development. Our portion is portion two, which is a 60-unit permanent supportive housing complex, which comes with 60 project-based vouchers as we move forward. What this resolution does, it authorizes the memorandum of understanding and ground lease option, which there are drafts of in the folder, but designates either David Evans, Anna Arridge, or Mark Watson to be able to execute those documents, and then also authorizes applying for the needed funding for the project as we move forward, so that they can apply for those funds. The funding that we're really looking at on this, about half of it is from ARPA funds that would come through the county, which the collaborative has designated with the county at this point. And then the other half would probably be through the Home ARPA funds. There may be a little bit of a gap, potentially about $1 million at this point, based on current cost estimates. If there is, what we have is a backup in case they can't find some other financing method to do that, would be once we look at the sale of the other property, since that's going to be reserved for permanent supportive housing, that is a method that you could have as a backup in case there is a gap. Be happy to answer any questions.
Hey David, I was about to ask you this at Finance Committee, but this is really awesome, being able to have 60 units for individuals to live in and have homes. I forgot to ask, though, of the 60 units, are these for an individual to live in? Or could a family live in one unit, or is it just for one?
Our 60 permanent supportive housing units are for one individual. Within the other units that will be surrounding this, which are more of the affordable housing and potentially even some retail spaces that will be run by NHP, those do have the mixed family size incorporated within them.
Questions? Motion to approve? Some? Thank you. All right. All in favor?
All right.
So nice to have all these. Things are happening, folks, that's really great. Okay, discussing take appropriate action regarding resolution on Kensington.
So the Kensington apartment complex is less than half a mile from the last one that we just talked about. This is a current apartment complex that through conjunction of organizations with Elizabeth Group, they did the initial financing for the purchase. As part of the closing of the purchase for $100, the land that the site is involved in was placed in Integral Care's name. They own the building through their limited liability corporation. What this resolution does, it updates a former resolution we have to change the individuals who are designated to sign things as we move forward. And again, keeps the opening for authorized application for funding as they identify funding for renovation of the facility as they move forward. They're currently about 80% full, and they plan to do it in stages where, once they finish the section, they'll move individuals, they work through the facility.
So the the building structure itself is owned by? And then and then Integral Care owns?
Integral Care owns the land. And then we have a ground lease with the group that owns the building for them to utilize it for the 99 years for affordable housing.
Okay, so now owning the land, that's a land trust of them, so.
So the land is just in our name, and that is partly needed so that the they can qualify for tax abatement as they move forward. And and really, that gets the structure in place for some of these potential head financing options where maybe if you get the financing, as long as you meet the income requirements of the residence for the 40 years, then it's forgivable at the end of the period without it having to be paid back.
But that's.
So the land we own, the building, we will never own.
Okay.
Unless you choose to buy.
Yes, unless we would buy it from the other group.
This is the first of that type of arrangement for your issued ground lease?
Well, no, we actually have that with Housing First Oak Springs, because we own the land, but the building is owned by Housing First Limited Liability Corporation.
All right. Any other questions or recommendations? All right, a motion to approve? Thank you, Randy Campbell, all in favor?
All right.
All right. Discussing take appropriate actions to fulfill 5515 Woodrow.
So 5515 Woodrow is a complex that had been used for supportive housing before. Really, the layout of it did not provide reasonable accommodations where we could really do the appropriate support and oversight for the residents. All residents have been relocated from the property. We have come to the board previously to get approval to put it on the market. We currently have an offer of 1.9 million from Spearhead Properties that we have a current contract signed, but it is signed with a clause in there that it's contingent upon board approval. As we move forward, the way I've worded the recommendation is to approve the draft purchase and sales contract as long as the final negotiated price is half or above the appraised value, but we don't want to go below that. And just for the record, the appraised value was 1.8 million. So if during their inspections, they find some things and need to negotiate a little bit, that gives a little bit of wiggle room as they finalize it. And this again is proceeds would be saved for permanent supportive housing.
This could be the backup.
Yes.
Question?
On this, but I thought of one of the previous one, and I'm sorry if I. It's just information, but I was thinking about the movie, the the Big Dolls, that founder movie, where it's like you're in the business of real estate, not fast food, which is why you're leasing out the, you know, the land. Is there any kind of like forecast or projection of what kind of income you would be making off of that apartments, or what what the income would be worth? For Kensington, since they're leasing, since we're not.
We mentioned on these, since they're going to be affordable housing, they will barely break even.
Okay.
Usually a 2% to 3% margin at most.
Got it, okay, and so that's, okay, thank you. And I have no questions on this one.
All right, thanks. All right. Questions? And a second motion to approve sale of 5515 Woodrow?
Submit.
Second, thank you, and a motion second, all in favor?
All right.
My next item is discussing take appropriate action regarding 401A retirement plan and creating non-elected forms.
So this is an interesting thing. So our 401A account to where we put the agency contributions towards employees' retirement into, when it was originally formed, was marked as a nonprofit plan and not as a governmental plan. As a nonprofit plan, one of the things that occurs is that required annual audits on the plan. The situation we found ourselves in this year is the firm that has traditionally done the audit on the plan is no longer doing audits on plans that are not under their purview. And no one else was willing to do the audit. So it came time that we need to get the plan under the correct format, because as a governmental plan, it does not require the annual audits, which is a significant expenditure as well. So in order to correct it, we consulted with some specialty attorneys in the area. The current plan must be discontinued. And then we would set up a 403B plan immediately to for the new contributions. So the resolution that you have in your packet is looking at discontinuing the current 401A as of December 31st. And any contributions for pay starting in January would go into a 403B. Still the same parameters for contributions, 4.5% of whatever the employee is making, no match required. The biggest impact that this will have, so the current plan balance is almost 18.5 million. Of that, almost 17.2 million is currently vested. Since the plan will be terminating, the additional amount that is in there, regardless of length of service, the employee will automatically become vested at the time the plan terminates. So at that point, the employees would have the option, they could roll it into the 403B if they wanted, but we would not have forfeitures if somebody left prior to five years, they would be automatically vested. That's the biggest change that's actually happening, which is why we wanted to be sure that you were aware of it. And it does take the board resolution in order to do that. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have on it.
David, we did discuss this last week, but can you explain what happens to the employee accounts under the 401A plan? And because they're.
Right, so the accounts for the employees under the 401A plan, basically, since the plan is terminating, they become the property of the individual, so they can have the option, if they want to roll it into another plan, they can. If they want to take dispersments, and if they're younger, would have appropriate IRS penalties, et cetera. But it becomes theirs at that point in time.
They will be required to take some action to move it to another vehicle?
I'm not sure if they have to move it to another vehicle, or if they can just leave it sitting there. But there will be no, no new contributions will go in, and it will be theirs to determine.
And it's the same carrier?
Same carrier, yes.
Both plans, so there's no.
Correct.
Around who's administering what?
Right.
So staff have the opportunity to talk with advisors regarding what their plan may be?
Yeah, Transamerica will make some available, and we have some other consultants that we can have available as well.
Ask, do we match?
So there's no match, because employees are not required to put anything in, it's just automatically 4.5% of whatever they make?
So there's no matching?
No match required.
There's automatic, there's an automatic. Maybe thinking about some, sometimes there are situations where there is an automatic employer contribution.
Right, it's kind of a voluntary, if the employee decides to contribute a lot. There can be a match, but I don't think that's the way our plan is.
Our plan is just strictly, we put in 4.5%. If the employee wants to do more, they can, but no one's required to.
Okay, so the employee puts in the 4.5%.
No.
Employee does not have to do anything.
The employer puts in that, the employee does not have to do anything. Okay, and choose to put whatever up to limitations.
Right.
The limitations are, right, but because it's an automatic employer contribution, it 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 does not include a matching contribution. Thank you for that. Okay, any other questions? Well, thanks for, again, giving us where we need to be in terms of compliance. I'll take a motion to free termination of the 401A retirement plan, it's going to be first of the trading non-elected forms. Thank you, Dr. Smore. I made a ready motion, second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you, David. Let's go on to our last item under the vendor's item, discussing take appropriate action regarding easement at 6222 North Lamar.
So at 6222 North Lamar, Alfred Williams and Company are our next-door neighbors, and they have requested an easement for electric and gas purposes. The easement would be a 55-foot-long strip that's about 5'2" wide on the north boundary of the property. In recognition of that, Alfred Williams is willing to allow us to leave the gate that is currently attached to their building that's on our property, as well as they would install some land kicks, caping into the existing plan or west of the easement area to kind of cover up what's going on. And they would replace the cedar fence between the properties. You can see here the building that's behind the parking lot, because the left side of the screen is our facility. The building right to the right of the parking lot is Alfred Williams. The red thing that you see there, not to scale, is where the easement would be. Just of note as well, so about 17 front feet of that easement will actually end up being taken in the future as they do the light rail on North Lamar. So I think that's one of the reasons why they want to get this work done as quickly as they can at this point in time. So it will not really intrude on our use of the property or anything that we have there. We actually. We actually have some long parking spaces there, so the spaces will still be usable as we move forward as well. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? We all accept the motion for free? I hope. Yeah, I will. All right. Thank you. Your motion second, all in favor? Any votes? Thank you. I think those are all of our actions for tonight. Thank you, David. And we now ask the lead to come back and join us for the board staff ad hoc committee and ritual.
And David's not going anywhere. Good evening again. So we're giving a, a report for the board staff ad hoc committee, David and I. And Mr. Hayes is going to introduce the last item on this board report. The about in September, we were planning to bring, we'll have on the agenda, some of the changes that we were proposing in terms of the procurement practices. So you have within your attached to your agenda some information that has to do with the procurement items, the full kind of script, as it were. So some of this is just segments from that. But we felt like in our procurement documents, it would be important to kind of set the stage with providers about what our expectation is, but also what our board's commitment is. So we start out with just a statement concerning the board commitment. And you can, you could see this, a lot of this has to do with both what the board's charge was and some of the development in terms of the ad hoc committee. So this also continues the information about what's expected in terms of the what our commitment is as an organization. Considering specifically about culture change in the organization and the expectation around our organizational assessment and accountability around the areas of client services, employees, contractors and non-direct contractors. And of course, our commitment to community engagement and collaboration. So part of what we were, we're trying to do with some of these activities is kind of like raise the bar, the expectations of what is expected of providers. So each of the procurements that were, were our release will include to the fore the focus questions on equity practice. And that's what I'm referring to in terms of your your fuller document. Providers and vendors would have the information about the importance of the work to us. Some of the sample questions are included and you have the whole, most of the list. That doesn't mean we won't come up with other questions. Because we see that's very much as a developmental process. But to just, for instance, a question that would include describing their training or what their current demographics are in terms of their workforce. And their plans to manage that diversity, but also to increase that diversity and that inclusiveness. We would also ask for certain proposers what their recruitment would look like. And whether or not their, the identity of their employees mirrors the Travis County population that we're interested in. We would be interested in their fiscal processes, specifically if they were going to be providing minimum wage. We have some of that in our RFPs now. What the progress has been for the proposer on implementation of class. If they, if they're, if they're doing any implementation, this would be for the larger organizational providers. And the provider, for every single one of our our procurements for services, we would be asking about their experience in providing services to individuals from a diversity of backgrounds, culture, language and ethnicity. So some of our next steps, okay, so that, that concludes actually our part of the presentation. Which is to say that I think one of the things that we have done is we started including or cooperating some of this content and some of the questions within our documents as we are developing new documents and procurement.
So you have a question?
Okay, David?
This is really great. The, the other question I have on this is, so let's say that we have a procurement for a hundred thousand dollars that we need to, to give providers of a certain type of service for us. What are our outreach engagement efforts to engage a broader community so that we do get a diverse group of proposals in from various places of funding? I think that's kind of part of it too, right?
Right. Exactly. Now I can speak for the provider end, individual provider end, and then David could speak more generally in terms of the vendor end. So for the provider end, one of the things I'm going to do with individual providers is that we have a network of, say, communities and schools, community members, parents who actually do say, hey, this person over here has this unique set of skills. So we do rely a lot in terms of our network of, of service, existing service providers. And then our case managers, case coordination staff. We are using some standard procurement processes or outreach processes, but we know we need to do more in terms of that recruitment area. So right now it's like we're, like for instance, we're looking at trying to get more providers that are uniquely qualified to deal with refugee and immigrant communities, for instance. So we have some contacts in the community that are, that are doing that work. So that's how we're getting engaged with that. But it also has a lot to do with some of the work that communication is doing right now. Around really connecting into the community so that we can get trusted partners to, to help us with it.
I have some question. I just have my experience with working with HUB. Like, when you was mentioning, I would just go huge, but I was even thinking first off, do we have a purchasing department or who handles purchasing? And then secondly, is there a way to host events even here to talk to the people who are the decision makers to see what is, what is, what is a good proposal look like? Examples? What are, what are some of the things that we need to make sure we include? A lot of the bigger firms, they have the cash flow that contract out that service to put together those proposals that check all the boxes. And the smaller ones don't. So they do it themselves and they just may not be hitting the right language that's needed to be like, okay. And, and so I just wonder, is there a way to do some internal outreach to really attract, because you know, when you get told no, or you see the same names getting the awards, they just quit coming around. They don't feel like they're ever going to get, you know, a seat at the table. So I just, that was my thought. And then what are our goals? Do we have any goals? Like how, do we have any percentage of what we would like to reach as far as different demographics? And then I know with bid bonds, maybe require a bid bond. For a lot of these construction companies, they can put up a five hundred thousand dollar bid bond. But the smaller ones, they cannot. That's so huge. To try to get a bid bond in that amount, they couldn't even qualify. So can we break up a contract that maybe ten million dollars into one million, two million, five hundred thousand to give the smaller companies an opportunity to competitively bid for it because they're not going to have that relevant experience?
Well, so one thing, I'll start with that last part first. So what typically happens there on some of the smaller contractors when you have a large project, such as the renovation of the facility that we're doing now? Is a lot of those smaller contractors will be subs of the main contractor. So the main contractor can put up the bid bond, but then you can still get to the historically underutilized businesses as subcontractors of that main contractor. So that they can still participate in the process as you move forward. I know on that project, the estimated amount or percentage of the work that's being done by historically underutilized businesses was about sixty-five percent of the work on that project. And that is as subcontractors of the main contractor.
That's great. And maybe we should even host like connect the vendor, like the subcontractors with the prime vendor.
So that's where we have to be careful though, because we can't say that we're going to use that prime vendor until they actually get put in the bid and receive the award.
Okay. So
So that's where we have to be careful.
So once they receive the award, maybe there's something we could, can help connect these subcontractors with ethnic demographic and new outreach to have a gathering to where they can
Well, so we can put information into the proposal as to what are their strategies for reaching out to the historically underutilized businesses, et cetera. And how are they going to help ensure that they're represented within the proposal that they're sending us? Because by the time they have the award, they pretty much have identified their subcontractors and how they're going to use them because they have to know that in order to put their bid package together.
Within your heart, you can say the desires for that.
Yes.
Right. So is that part of the evaluation criteria, whether there be their desires? Agency's desire for that?
Yes. We've been trying to ensure that that's one of the scoring criteria as well. So if something is close in rankings, that if it's historically underutilized business, they can end up with some additional points that could push them over the top.
Thank you, Deborah. I really appreciate the idea of looking more closely at goals, especially. We're just beginning the process really. So I, I've made a note of that. And also about the information about getting together, kind of having a pre-bid kind of idea. We had kind of talked about that previously when our chief equity officer had joined us. We hope that when that new person is on board, it will be able to continue to pursue that. Oh, David. Yes.
Maybe a quick note on the update on the, on the chief equity officer. Over five weeks, we held this position open. We now have, I'm working with HR, twenty-five qualified applicants. Early next week, Rodney and I are going to take a look at I'm not going to say finalists, but maybe those seven or eight that are the most qualified in that pool. And then we'll actually start an interview process. I would say that was helpful to me in working closely and sitting in the background of those task force meetings and would just ask if I could, again, bounce some ideas. Emmett, Paul, and Reverend Callahan, and some of the insights you may have as we move toward a final interview. Thank you.
One clarification on this. This remains a place with a definite end date.
Oh.
Oh, this is
Segways.
Okay. So we were having discussions in, in, in terms of the ad hoc committee. And we knew we wouldn't operate at that for Nita. So we were looking at the ways that committees end of this sort. So of course, there's an end date. We did not establish a definite end date for the committee. And also completing the goals and objectives that you set out to accomplish. And we are at that place where we've completed our goals and objectives. So, you know, as we continue to process it, then you know, are we at a place now where we should be looking at terminating the committee of what? Well, the other discussion came in the place that we do not have. At this point, one of the goals, of course, includes the equity officer. So we no longer have that position to deal. So the conversation then began with that chief equity officer in mind in terms of when that person comes aboard with that be a benefit to him to have the racial equity committee in place in order to continue to process. Which would likely mean a, a sort of a temporary pause for the committee, you know, in terms of the, the work that we've done. So we wanted to be able to talk with the board and get, get a validation of our next step and feel comfortable about where we're going. And feel that there would be consensus, I think, from the committee. We're comfortable with any of them, but of course we do have a sensitivity toward the chief equity officers. So with that in mind, just a matter of conversation as we back from the board.
So you're, if I understand correctly, the idea would be to temporarily pause the committee. One idea is temporarily pause the committee. Have the committee resume for a period of time just as that. And the committee members are willing to serve?
Yes. I don't think we have anyone to abandon ship.
No reason to ship.
We'd like to call David back for it's probably going to be
That's a good, that's a good idea.
All right. Personally, I think, I think that's a great idea. Helpful. So, what do you sense?
And just to clarify, those are three options. There doesn't have to be a pause in the work of the committee. The committee can be available to management and staff and the board as needed between now and thereafter.
Which is really a good point. As staff continues to work on certain aspects of equity and the work in the committee that they're doing. There's always an opportunity for the committee to, to process that and hear from them as opposed to all of them coming to the board at that time. So, you know, that is a a very valuable importance.
I think it would be good to keep it going. We have a finance committee, we have a planning and operations committee. It seems like we should keep the committee in place.
For the matter.
I mean, just, it's not positive, but just keep going. The other work is important. Until it's natural conclusion.
Yeah.
Appears.
I mean, what is the, what is the definite end date? We don't have one, you know?
No.
Yeah.
But we don't.
Yes, standing committee.
Yeah.
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 Okay, that's a slightly different discussion, whether we want to convert that to a standing committee right now from ad hoc committee. What's involved?
That might be an amendment to the bylaws if it's going to be truly
Yeah, standing committee. That way we can get reports. It's like we get reports from finance. Parts and planning operations. Don't necessarily have to make that decision tonight if we don't want to. We can, but what I'm hearing is your desire to Do I hear correctly, you'd, you'd like to say to continue to add up to maybe need regularly or as part of
Yeah, our, our, our discussions were pretty much as we have them there, we have considered the temporary pause in view of the hiring. And I think to some extent the holidays too, from my perspective. But, you know, it's, it was important, I think, for us to consider the chief equity officer in that position. Now, we did not consider ad hoc versus standing committee. That is not something that we've got, so. Stay low as an exception.
Yeah. I was just, I was just going to say, I wonder, since we get the kind of the reporting at the meetings, could we just include that as well as just a continual update within our actual meetings within planning and operations, seeing both Ed and that are on the planning and operations committee having that kind of in confidence. So it's not doubling up on their role and responsibility too, because it's a separate committee in conjunction with planning and operations. So maybe that is kind of woven into where you continue to work on that. Have that as a standard report. But maybe not as a separate ad hoc committee. I don't know.
We, we really do have great, great staff who work with us. And I, I think that that probably puts a few more hats on them at, at one time. We really do have great, great staff who work with us, and I I think that that probably puts a few more hats on them at 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 one time and. And I don't want to get too confused myself with which meeting I'm going to be. Processing. So for that reason, I I'd like to think about it keeping it separate.
Okay.
As a sheriff, you know, because. And Emmett said, you know, that's a lot of her fresh beliefs.
I think it comes down to what is our view of. The importance of equity within our organization. I I could see easily this being a standing committee for at least five years. Uh, to ensure the work is fully implemented. And overseeing and such monitored. As a standing committee, I I think you would get more focus. Um, and. Demonstrate to people within the organization and outside the organization that it's a real priority for us.
Right. I would agree with that thinking.
Well, why don't we, um, why don't we do this? I'm, if I'm hearing correctly, you're leaning towards the last bullet.
Yes, personally.
Personally?
I think, uh, you you know, I don't want to speak for the for the committee or to say that in that regard, but I I feel confident. That that they feel the same.
Well, the last bullet is paused until the new. Equity officer arrives, but the management team may want the committee's input between now and then, including a resource.
Right, yeah, that's exactly. I think I think that what I heard the temporary pause was just. From a scheduled, a regularly scheduled meeting. That he would still be available for the input requested for the hiring of the chief equity officer. And then to resume on a regular schedule.
Yes. Yeah, so that that, I think we can work that, um, you know, yeah, and I think that's the idea of the temporary pause was really based on the chief equity officer. You know, and that hiring and they continue to work. I do, uh, I do sense that, yeah, there'll be plenty of reports and. And uh, opportunities for us to continue to examine staff progress, staff committee uh, progress. So. I see that the work, work is still there and available. Uh, part of that thinking is whether or not they would be transferred to the board its entirety, or would that work be better suited as a committee? I think that's part of it.
Well, why don't we do this? So we're gonna. We're gonna take our last bullet point as our current direction. We'll bring this back next month for consideration of um, what the. Prior to that, we'll also examine participation of. Like who will, you may go beyond current. I'd like to talk to board members that have an interest, you know, who might, we're creating another standing committee who might want to serve on that. So that'll give us a chance to evaluate that. That sound good, everyone? All right. Thanks, thank you. And the two thousand one. Well, thank you for your willingness to continue to serve and like, you know, be recruiting to others. Hopefully, continue on with that. So I did not recognize uh, earlier that you're what you're willing is. Continue to serve as our liaison for the dancer number. Um, let's see, where are we? David, give your report.
Okay, I'd like to quickly update if I could on our continued work with the United Workers of Integral Care. Uh, operationalizing our uh. Consultation policy with a monthly um, integral care consultation committee. And so after a meeting with the union representatives um, in October. Um, they asked that we not meet again until our second Tuesday in. January, and then we'll have our Janu- a general report at the January meeting. Um, you know, we concluded the work within this calendar year, really with looking at security across all of our facilities. Uh, last month or when our last meeting, I complimented their state within the boundaries of the um. Consultation policy and really in a very collaborative way making recommendations. Uh, we also opened up a way for communication with our employees at their request on work and change orders in which communication was often slow as to what was actually happening. Either with the renovations in the area, pest control, uh, some facility moves. And so now employees can actually look on the share point. And see where some of those standing um, changes are are being made in their area. Um, also talked, sent a note to them today on the going into this new year. Uh, we did ask, there was a couple of times this month in which uh, union, we believe, actually within media. Uh, talked about what they were supporting locally in the way of campaigns and some uh, some other activities, and it listed integral care. And as a governmental entity, there are some legal boundaries, and they just asked that when they post the type of things that the union supports, that they use their full name. Uh, in that communication, but uh. We can look forward to enter January meeting. We'll have an update when it is new year with our formal engagement. And I think that also alongside just the workforce report. Um, I do want to mention that I really recognize the work that Ann Nagelkirk has done in particular with our employee. Um, uh, advisory council, you know, also what they're putting together. Remember, we've really looked at hearing from all of our employees, you know, those that may not be covered with the at the at the onset thirteen percent and joining the union, a hundred percent. Uh, of our employee recommendations, and that's become an active and productive uh, work group. Also in regards to workforce, we don't have a formal report tonight, but we keep making gains on, I really think this is due to board policy actions on compensation, the compensation study or minimum pay. And then also some of the recruitment uh, bonuses that we've been paying out. And um, in that regard, Rodney reports that our vacancy rate continues to go down each month. Um, workforce is the number one issue amongst all the community uh, mental health centers across the state. And workforce is one of the top five. Uh, you'll see an unsure report on the Texas council's uh, work going into this eighty-eighth legislative session. Um, also, I just want to mention organizationally with uh, with employees of. Uh, you know, David, we joked about all the ways that we don't, uh, we're going to miss you. But uh, the work is going to go on. And so I just want to say to the board that we really divided David's work up into three. Uh, areas that, so it's going to take at least three people, but uh, we have a deep bench. You've met these folks before, but I just want to introduce the fact that starting on Monday, Scott Ruff. Scott. Uh, thank you for agreeing to pick up in addition to your chief technology officer. Uh, within that column of related administrative officer work, and that includes human resources, facilities. Uh, some of our applications and continued MIS. You've had, so thank you. Uh, also, uh, number two, uh, Anna Horasius has agreed to oversee the column. It really has to do with accounting, budget analysis, accounts payable. Often we'll have Matt Beasley, you know, in attention. You'll be supervising him, Mark Watson, who's here tonight, Mark. Thank you in accounting. And and Joe Carrington, I don't know if he's been introduced to the board yet or not. He did not a yes. Was it the full board or at our financial committee?
We met him at finance.
The finance, so Joe also joins us as having served as a chief financial officer. Was that a Tyler? Yes, and so uh, Anna, having been the chief financial officer in another center. Uh, you know, we have a a deep bench here, so Anna's also going to join us on the executive management team on Monday. I want to mention also, Dela, I think you've had such a deep insights into some of the uh, fiscal projects, some of the system improvements. Dela is going to step into a role on special projects here, uh, you know, right through the remainder of this fiscal year. And um, really doing some work that I think will streamline and update uh, some of our work in the area that you've seen. So thank you for staying on in that regard. So, or some executive organizational changes, but I'm very confident in this team. Where we'll be going in the future, especially if we have David's phone number, we'll be able to continue to tap into that. So looking ahead, just a couple of things briefly, um, at the January meeting, I'll do the first quarterly formal report on the SMART goals you've identified for this year. Um, also on, and we have uh, next week, a couple of holiday parties. We've taken a a break from this because of COVID, but we're going to come back and invite people into this building. Uh, twice, and has some, any board members have an opportunity, could they drop in and meet with meet with any of our employees that are here?
Excellent.
Then looking ahead, I just would mention that uh. Al, I don't know if you worked with other board appointees from Travis County, but to really keep ongoing communications with our commissioners court. Uh, we met twice with them now, and uh, they've really picked up on this idea of a quarterly report. Uh, the sheriff and I are serving along with with the with the other folks in leadership positions on criminal justice. Um, men- behavioral health um, uh, intersect. And in particular, looking at whenever possible, serving folks through access to treatment in the community. A lot of conversation about a diversion center and then the impact on the jail, the number of folks in jail. Uh, with um, with uh, behavioral health and also focusing on any recidivism or any folks that uh, have gone through rearrest. And um, currently reentering the jail. Uh, today we focused on one hundred and six folks. Who would really represent the most complex cases in town, and the number of times that they, and what what charges that they've had. Sheriff, I don't know if you want to say anything on that, but it's important, community, we're we're looking ahead right now under the CEO report. I'm just going to close out by saying the. Uh, we're going to report, I think it's the first of February, on the results back to commissioners court on this uh, challenge to look at what's called a forensics steering committee.
I would say a lot of great. In the involvement. And then. Being things.
You have been answering questions.
I have, that's the question, that's that. Um, are we doing on individuals or IDD that aren't? I know that was a topic that I've heard a lot in the last year.
But we're, we are, we are definitely focusing, focusing. I've been working with.
If I were to be on a project, I didn't ask that specifically. It was great about what the numbers are looking like, what kind of impact.
I can comment on this, Dawn, you've been close to this work also.
You may actually have a little bit more detail. Um, good evening, Dawn Henry, chief operations officer. Sorry, I sound like I have a cold because I did. Um, but yeah, we still have that project, and we also um, are doing work still with the um. I'm blanking on the name, Garza's group, the attorneys.
Do you?
I think, I think that's the. Can you help me with the name?
The institution, this is it.
That's it. Yep.
Right, right, right.
And then the other part of that work is involved with our in-reach program. So it's not an IDD specific program, but those are um, individuals. Um, who have been in court authority. So as part of that continuity of bringing them out once they're released from jail, making sure they're connected to services, doing what we need to do to get them. In line for any IDD services if they haven't already um, gone through that process. And so just kind of navigating um, our way through that as well. And then there's the component that touches them around the outpatient competency restoration program as well. So it's kind of across the continuum.
The question, David, and did you say you're going to be meeting with the commissioners court coming up, or that has already taken place?
So the contract that they have to conduct this study with with the series of recommendations will be in February. And uh, I'll I'll keep you up to date, being a appointment on this.
Thank you. Okay, last item before jumping to comments.
Friends. I do participate in, I think, three of the work groups for this forensic steering committee. So to be clear. Travis County did this without a landscape of what we have and an assessment of what our needs are. So. We're all flying by the seat of our pants, and we have no data. So it's interesting, the hundred and six, there's actually a long conversation happening because is it just the hundred and six people from the jail? Dan Smith from the jail has another number of ninety-three people who cost the most. We were told it didn't cross-reference hospitals, the services crisis. So just wanted to make that clear. But IDD is a nightmare. Um, and I did do an open records request recently, and I just want this out in the open. Um, because we have a resource in Texas, and I talk about it all the time, that we don't use and we should reimagine, just as we have done with the state hospitals, but we have state-supported living centers, thirteen of them. We have one in the middle of Austin. And in the last five years, Integral Care has made ten referrals total. I've received information that we have one thousand three hundred and thirty people under Integral Care's offices under the LITA. That are actually eligible for an SSLC. That does not mean that they should all go to an SSLC by any means. But when I'm sitting in meetings every week, and when we have someone die in your jail, N'Quon Carter in twenty eighteen, age twenty-three. And we see the cycle over and over, and we cannot get that referral, that is a huge problem. So I did meet with. A senator today and a representative to have this discussion because the nightmare in the jail is so huge in the jails. That last legislative session, that the legislature required the Texas Commission on Jail Standards to create an IDD advisory committee. They don't have enough data. I know we have membership from Integral Care on that committee. That report, I believe, should be posted on the TCJS website this evening. I will be reading it. I know that there's going to be a lot missing. But thank you for asking the question because we have to keep pushing this. And I am not saying the answer is this, but you need the full range of options. And when I dropped off my brother today at the state hospital where he has lived now for over fourteen years with the IDD population, and I've been. Trying to get him to the state-supported living center because I happen to know, and his entire treat- treatment team has said for years, it is the most appropriate, least restrictive setting. His IQ is a little bit too high, otherwise we'd be good to go. He has been fast-tracked to this one hundred seventy thousand person plus waitlist. To get a group home where everybody said it was a ticket to death or to jail, and that is true for many, many people. So we need to be working on the realistic range of options, be person-centered, and really not be okay with people going to jail, dying in jail, being homeless, cycling, cycling, cycling. Thank you. You all have good questions.
We're all, we're all during the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for being with us and being with us this entire year. Before we move again, we'll have closed out.